Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. DeGenova?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Item number two is an invocation by Mr. Jones. And before we give the invocation, if we could just have a moment of silence. As most of you know, our mayor's been dealing with some serious family health problems. He's out of state, so we can just keep in our thoughts and prayers for just a moment before the invocation. All right, Mr.?
Thank you. Father, we ask that you please bless us all. And I've got in this evening, we ask that you be with us as we make decisions for our friends and our neighbors and all citizens of the city. Lord, I ask at this time of the year that just be with everybody and their families as they think of those who are no longer with them during this holiday season. And as always, Lord, I pray that everyone who's here tonight gets to their next destination safely. Amen.
Amen.
Let's go to some pledge release.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is approval of motion summaries. Charge. You need to do it again.
Motion to excuse Mayor Riggle.
A motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Now, item four, approval of the motion summaries?
Approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held November 28, 2016, as recorded and transcribed, and approval of the motion summary of the budget work session of council held December 3, 2016, as recorded and transcribed.
Thank you. What was the call? Motion to approve, second. Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mr. DeGenova.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Item number five is the consent agenda. May I, if you could, please read that into the record?
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Historic Preservation Commission meeting held October 26, 2016. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary for the Planning Commission meeting held November 2, 2016. Item C, resolution number 16-52, a resolution authorizing the modification of certain traffic control signage to extend the no parking here to corner zone on the west side of North Liberty Street from West William Street to the north property line of 25 North Liberty Street. Item D, resolution number 16-53, a resolution repealing resolution number 05-23 and resolution number 96-43, removing the time restrictions on the two, two-hour parking spaces and one fifteen-minute parking space in front of 216 North Sandusky Street. Item E, resolution number 16-54, a resolution authorizing the installation of a no parking any time zone on the north side of Firestone Drive from the east property line of 188 Firestone Drive to Delaware Drive. Item F, established January 9, 2017, at 7:30 PM as the date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 16-110, an ordinance amending section 737.01 of the City of Delaware's codified ordinances relating to circuses. Council permission, license, bond, and insurance required.
Thank you. What's the wish of council regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes. Given.
Second.
If you have a motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Item number six is time during the meeting for letters and public comments regarding anything that is not on tonight's agenda, or anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and make comments regarding something that's not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to item seven, committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none, sir.
Start.
I have none.
I have none.
Roll.
Nothing.
I'll make it unanimous. Item number eight is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 16-103.
Seven.
Number seven.
Seven, that's a seven jury.
Okay, so we can skip down there.
Okay, so now we're nine through thirteen.
So...
She can read nine through thirteen.
Yeah. So, Elaine, could you read items nine through thirteen into the record, please?
Yes, sir.
Item nine, ordinance number 16-98, an ordinance approving the rezoning of member for Delaware Development Plan LTD from A1 Agricultural District and A1 PMU. Agricultural District with a plan mixed-use overlay district to A1 PMU for Coughlin's Crossing on fifteen parcels, partial encompassing approximately eighty acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, and north of Meeker Way. Ordinance number 16-99, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for Delaware Development Plan LTD allowing the placement of a PMU, plan mixed-use overlay district for Coughlin's Crossing encompassing approximately eighty acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, and north of Meeker Way. Ordinance number 16-100, an ordinance approving an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for Delaware Development Plan LTD on property designated as mixed-use, low-density, single-family, and medium-density, single-family on the future land use map to mixed-use for Coughlin's Crossing encompassing approximately eighty acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, and north of Meeker Way. Ordinance number 16-101, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Delaware Development Plan LTD for Coughlin's Crossing encompassing approximately eighty acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, and north of Meeker Way. An ordinance number 16-102, an ordinance approving a preliminary subdivision plat for Delaware Development Plan LTD for Coughlin's Crossing encompassing approximately eighty acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, and north of Meeker Way.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Mr. Vice Chair and members of council, members of the public, this is the third reading, and we've had the public hearing open and closed at the last meeting. In addition to presentation, I realize two of you weren't here. Hopefully, you've had a chance to go over the material and perhaps even see the YouTube of the presentation. It was pretty impressive, I think, particularly from the applicant with flying us around and through the site and really giving us a sense of this development. Chris, because you were here and you asked a specific question in meeting one, I'll just, I'll answer it because you're here tonight. Again, I answered it last meeting, but obviously you weren't here. You asked a question about the percentage of residential versus commercial development in this state. My answer then remains the same as it does today. It really, it kind of depends how you calculate it, based on acreage or based on square footage. There's a mixture of uses in different subareas, as you know, allowed in here, but it's between twenty-five percent and, and a third of the site would be residential, which is, I think, at that first meeting when you asked the question, that was the guess that one of the other council members had at that meeting. And I'd say that's right, about, about thirty percent is how we can calculate that for you at this time. Obviously, some of the sites are even preliminarily laid out, and those would have to come back for you as laid out in the zoning text. But the applicant and her team are here tonight, and Connie, I don't know whether you have anything in addition to say, but the planning commission did recommend unanimous approval of these cases, as do we as staff. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. President? I know you've already had a public hearing on this, but it's my understanding there's at least one person in the audience who'd like to comment, so before we get into acting further on these, if you want to give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Ed Gifford, of the Stratford Woods Homeowners Association, board member. My address is 165 Beach Drive, Delaware. I want to take a moment of your time. First, I'd like to thank you for accepting my request to address you tonight, understanding that, you know, the public hearing was closed, et cetera. I just wanted to, brief comments in terms of, one, as a, as a subdivision, as a neighborhood, I have not heard any objection or criticism of the, of the development that's going to go in, and I think it's very highly, it's a favorable view, and, and people are looking for it, I think, with great anticipation as to really what's going to happen. But the one comment that does come back to us more than, more than once has to do with the faraway stop that's part of the plan that's to be installed at the intersection of Hawthorne and Route 23. We've expressed this concern with Bill and the engineer's office, and they did come out and do a three-day analysis of traffic, showing that there, over the three-day period, there were over 5,000 vehicles that entered and exited that Hawthorne 23 intersection, as it is currently, the three-way. And I guess what I want to say is, one, we certainly appreciate engineering taking the opportunity to perform that. Certainly gives us as citizens a base from which we can, as we move forward, we can say, we have this information, and we can see what impact may or may not happen from this point on in terms of traffic change. We certainly expect there to be a change in traffic, not only by this, but also by the Sawmill extension that's happening, and a lot, a lot is going on at the same time surrounding the area. So, we're not sure what's going to happen, but I guess what we, look, my point of saying it, wanting to comment tonight was to say, you know, thank you for the, for the services, but also that we anticipate more to come in terms of our needs, be it studies, changes in, in traffic, permissiveness, be it parking or speed, et cetera, in the area, and just to make that a, I guess, a public statement to the, to the council for what this might bring of us to as, as citizens in the area. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else with comments before we move on? What is wish of council on ordinance 16.98?
I move for the approval of 1698, as submitted.
Second. You have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, and second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
1699, I move for the approval of that.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
16100, I move for the approval as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
16100, I move for the approval as submitted.
Second. Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
And lastly, 16102, and the reason why I'm moving for the approval, because it's my ward, and I think it's a great project.
So, you have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Good luck.
Item number fourteen is ordinance, second reading of ordinance 16-105.
Ordinance number 16-105, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Wolf Industrial Park Company.
Yeah, this is really a continuation of the first reading at the last meeting, and it's ready to be adopted. I know the attorney showman was working with the county on this, but it's really, this is an outcome of an agreement that the county had to reach over the acquisition of some land in connection with Sawmill Parkway, and it's been vetted by our planning staff and our engineering and public works.
Yeah, we just didn't have enough quorum last time to suspend the rules because Council of Rohr was abstaining because he works for the county prosecutor's office.
So, what's wish of council tonight? Want to move on this or take it to three readings?
We'd recommend you move on it if you can. This is one less thing you have to put on the agenda.
I move to suspend the rules on ordinance 16-105.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Epstein.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
I move for approval of ordinance 16-105.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Epstein.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number fifteen, second reading of ordinance 16-107.
Ordinance number 16-107, an ordinance amending the Delaware Municipal Court and Clerk of Court employee benefits and lead policies in declaring an emergency. Emergency clauses, ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 28, 2016. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Darren, do you have comments on this?
This is really just the, all four of these are second, actually, three of them are second readings of our pay plans. The third reading and adoption would be next Thursday night when we do the budget.
We don't typically do too much with the clerk of courts plan either. They kind of do all that themselves.
All right, thank you. Item number sixteen is the second reading of ordinance 16-108.
Ordinance number 16-108, an ordinance amending ordinance number 15-115, establishing the pay and benefits for various part-time and intermittent and seasonal employees of the City of Delaware.
Again, there were no, this is again, second reading, yeah.
Would you also read item seventeen, ordinance 16-109?
Ordinance number 16-109, an ordinance amending the Management Professional Technical Confidential Supervisory Employees Pay Plan in declaring an emergency. Emergency clauses, ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 28, 2016, which coincides with the new calendar year. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Stop right time for the public hearing, so we'll continue to move down the agenda. Item eighteen is consideration of ordinance 16-110.
Ordinance number 16-110, an ordinance amending section 737.01 of the City of Delaware's codified ordinances relating to circuses. Council permission, license, bond, and insurance required.
If I may add an update to this, Vice Mayor, I wrote this legislation coming out of, almost a year ago, we had a testimony around the circus permit that came through. We realized that we hadn't amended that section, I think since '69 or '79. It had been a long time, and a lot of the requirements that at a minimum we would want just hadn't been updated in terms of insurance and bond and things like that. But there was also some concern about, some residents were concerned about circuses and how to treat the animals, and it kind of exposed one of the potential weaknesses in our existing code, which is, that's not even a criteria you're allowed to consider under the current code. So, based on the feedback that I got, we kind of built in, that is an option, not that you have to grant the permit, or not grant the permit, but it is a factor that you can do to consider whether or not you want to issue the permit. The draft you have was our first stab. I sent that draft to the three, I believe there were three women who testified last time about the, their concern about animal cruelty, and I also sent it to the circus that was attempting to get a permit last time. One issue that I think we're probably going to want to tighten up, but I wanted to get it on in front of you now to start the discussion, is how do you define cruelty to animals? What kind of evidence do you need? I did learn, since I submitted that draft, that the U.S. Department of Agriculture apparently is the one who inspects circuses, and they do so fairly regularly, and they have a division called the Animal Plant Health Inspection Service, AFIS, and they actually go through and they issue citations, minor citations, major citations. So, perhaps in the draft that you'll see next time, it'll reference that as opposed to just an overwhelming, an over-vague concept of animal cruelty. You might mention, as evidenced by citations by AFIS, which gives you a little bit more concrete so people know we're talking the same language. But I'm open to any other feedback. We want to definitely go through reading to give people who are concerned the opportunity to bring forward information. I'm kind of an obverse of this, but you can tell a lot of people and put a lot of thought and research into it, so this draft is one of those that will certainly change as we move to the three readings.
Two things, Darren. What you just said, is that referencing section one, that 737.01, where it says, or that the circus?
Yes.
So, that would be, as an example, if there's past documentation of...
I think one, one thing we don't want to have happen is we don't want to have a circus apply, and people come in and say, I don't like circuses because they are bad, and this other circus chained elephant up. We want to be fair to this particular circus, so I think that's kind of what we want to nail down, but that's the concept, and we just got to figure out the fairest way and the more accurate way to write it.
And on the second page, under section one, I guess it would be second paragraph, says the insurance should be one million, but then the dollar says a hundred million, so...
Oh, that's a typo. We will fix that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hundred, hundred million dollars would pretty much effectively... Thanks for that catch.
Do the, do the feds just cite them when they're, when they do things wrong, or do they actually certify them, or...
They have a, I looked, I did some research, they actually do a record of every inspection that they've done, and they'll put out a piece of paper that says, no violations were found, or we've asked them to do these three things. So, there actually is a pretty...
Is it for a timeframe though, like a year or two?
They, I didn't, I didn't get a clear sense of how often they were doing the inspections, but it seemed pretty regularly like that. I just happened to look up Carson Barnes, because they were the ones who were here last time, and they had like forty different reports. No, they were not citations. Some of them were just passed, and they'll look into this, elephants' weight loss and things like that, but they seem to be doing it fairly regularly, and I can get more information as to how often that is.
The feds do it on a regular basis. I'm just wondering if we can just track that, and our ordinance, you say they've been inspected and a lot of them are currently...
That's what I'm, I'm thinking. I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm not missing something, so I was thinking along those lines, I have to try to see if that's too weak or something, because the folks who sent it pointed me in this direction, and they said, yeah, they do that, but often they don't catch everything. I can't do too much about that, but that would be an easier way to track it, have everyone on the same page.
At least it's less arbitrary that someone come in and make a claim that we can't really substantiate.
Exactly. And it also had, I just need to do a little bit more digging into it, because they had two different, it looks like two different kinds of violations, minor and major, and I couldn't find too many examples. The nice thing is Carson and Barnes didn't have any of those that I could see, but I'm going to try to dig around and see if I can figure out, maybe the minor ones aren't a big deal, but the major ones are, so I'll try to learn more by the next meeting as well.
I guess that's my concern, is what actually determines if the circus is mistreating animals? Like, if they have one major citation five years ago? It seems so arbitrary, and my concern is then if we say yes, we're basically saying the circus isn't mistreating animals. That's so subjective, still.
There, there, you're right. There's going to, there, right now, there's tons of subjectivity, and I can nail it down. Now, the more I nail it down, the less subjectivity there is, but it'd be, I'd be interested in hearing what council's thoughts are. We could say, no major violations in the last five years. We could say that, but then you're kind of taking a stand as to what timeframe you think is important upfront, but we can certainly do that. I just didn't want to go get ahead of the game and say, okay, I think a year is enough, or two, or three, or whatever it is, so it'd be interesting to have that conversation, but we can make it, say whatever you think is appropriate.
Now, would it be appropriate for a council member to say, I feel like a circus mistreats animals in general, and I don't care if they've been cited or not, I think the whole concept of it is mistreating an animal? Is that a reason then to say no, based on the way the ordinance is written? I'm not saying...
So, the current ordinance without change is absolutely not. It is very clear that you can only do it if they don't have the bond paperwork and things like that, so, so that's, that's the easy answer. The second answer is, the way it's written right now, it's kind of vague, and someone could potentially say that. The way I think we want to nail it down, we probably wouldn't want to leave that open, but again, that's kind of a policy question for council, because that would, in essence, tie your hand. I think concerns we had last time was that our hands were tied too tight, where there were some people saying they had real concerns about circuses in general, and I told you, I would advise you not to vote that way, because that's against our code. So, if you want that flexibility, we can leave it the way it is now, but I think it leaves a lot of subjectivity, and we'll be having debates about that every time it comes up. But if you want that, we certainly can leave it in there. I would ask council to make findings as to why you voted that way, like, kind of like we did last time, where they provided evidence and things like that.
Well, last time it was easier because they didn't submit the paperwork.
Right, right, right. And they're, they're letting us know now they'd like to have a circus in late March, and so...
So, with this one in particular, can we use that as an example? Like, how many violations do they have? Do you know that?
I didn't pull, I was just kind of spot checking, and they didn't seem to have hardly.
Wasn't this circus pages?
We've had both come, but I think Carson Barnes was the one where we actually had...
Was that the one that we denied them last time?
Was it circus pages? Carson Barnes had been here, but they did the paperwork. They were the ones that did the paperwork correctly. I'm sorry, it just popped into my head.
I mean, when, when we look at, and, and I know, going back to our prior discussion, there were a couple different areas of concern. One was the potential, you know, there, there was, let me characterize it as, as, as the PETA perspective, the ethical treatment of animals perspective, you know, no animals, whatever. And then there was also, and Lisa, I think you brought it up, well, how can we be assured of the safety and security of residents? You know, I mean, what happens if an elephant gets loose? What happens if a lion or tiger or bear gets loose? Really, when you look at what our society as a whole has done with regards and, and what the mindset is now towards animals, I mean, you, you see SeaWorld shutting down, you know, they're, they're getting rid of their killer whales. Ringling Brothers, no more, you know, no more elephants. When I was looking out there at circus pages, you know, they, they talk about their animals being elephants, rare white tigers, camels, acrobatic dogs, which I'd really like to see. Liberty ponies, which I don't know what a liberty pony is, horses, and rare white lions. Well, both those white ones, I, I went out there and was looking around, American Zoological Association went ahead and put out a paper of perspectives for all their zoo members, saying you cannot breed these, what they call rare white tigers, they're just, they're just inbred so much, and that they end up having very bad health issues as a result of this, and that's how they get these, you know, lack of color type coats and what have you. I mean, personally, and it'll be interesting when we see the, the public hearing next time, but personally, I would like to say, if it's not domesticated animal, you can have your horses and your liberty ponies, which I want to see, and your acrobatic dogs and mules or whatever else. But, you know, I think, I think we would be right in the midpoint of what our society allows by saying, "No, they're not bringing lions and tigers and bears." You know, when you come, you know, you, you're, if you're going to have animal acts, they're going to be domesticated animals and they're not going to have lions and tigers and bears. And that just totally gets rid of the potential for harm. I don't think an acrobatic dog is going to kill anybody, even if it does get his practice deftly or something. But, but, you know, I, I think that might be something, it'll be interesting to hear what the public hearing has to say on that. But that would be, that's kind of where my stand is on this. I would say just, you can come, but you can't have those animals.
Well, if council is inclined to go that direction, we, we do have a exotic animals ordinance in a different part of our ordinances that does make a distinction between native Ohio animals and normally domesticated farm animals. So that there is some sort of, that split is already in our code in a different area in terms of what people can have is pets and things like that. So I didn't have that in my notes, it's something that people brought up last time, but that certainly is, I guess I'm, this is kind of an interesting process for me because we're looking, I'm looking for direction and there's so many ways you can go with it, which is why I'm pretty sure this is going to change a lot over the next six weeks that we consider this, so.
What do you recommend?
Well, I reckon, I think at a minimum, given what you want to do and what some concerns that folks have, you are going to want to have built in that you can turn it down for your concerns about the animal treatment, because I think that is something that now we're learning they actually do inspections on. It's kind of an easy third party. You can have evidence, you can introduce that into your council file and it kind of takes out any, I don't want to say discrimination, but disparate treatment. You like this circus, but you don't like this one. No, we have evidence and here's the papers that were submitted for this one and here's the papers that were, clean papers that were submitted for that one. I think you, anytime you add subjectivity to a permitting process as folks livelihood, you are kind of opening yourself up to potential challenges. Why did you grant this one and not this one? So I think relying on a third party source, especially the federal government, is the safest way to go. But if you're reserving all that discretion for yourselves and you're, I think if you say we don't want any of them at all, that's another way to do it, you know, the kind of the cobalender rule. That's a pretty bright line if you said no exotic animals, circuses, that's also consistent. I think when you get into the, well, we'll evaluate it each time, that's when you can get in trouble. The simplest way would just be to refer to the, the feds and say, you know, this many violations over this amount of time, you know.
Does the victimless system have some kind of standard? It's not arbitrary. Give us a little bit of discretion.
And we can know, the other thing is this, this will be the, we'll be trying to work in progress. We can always go back and reamend it if we're finding out that our period's too large or we're getting complaints from our residents that they want more or less circuses. So it's kind of like our fee ordinance, we can always come back and tinker with it to improve it.
I'm just Google searching and there's a bunch of cities that have done what Jordan is saying and just banned the use of exotic animals in circuses. I mean, we wouldn't be the first. Even New York City, it says, was considering a ban.
Do you have comments? If you want us to do a little more research on that, we can before the public hearing, at least so you know. We can provide at least, give you an idea of who's done that recently and...
I can also write it up both ways, so we'll be ready to look at both.
I don't, I honestly don't know how I feel about it because part of me says, you know, people wouldn't go. You know, if we allowed people to decide by buying tickets, then if they had a personal problem with it, they wouldn't buy the tickets. And then eventually the circuses would not come anymore because no one would buy the tickets.
Right.
I don't know. But then at the same time, I understand and agree with the animal rights perspective that...
I do know that circus pages does want an opportunity as part of the public hearing to present their testimony in terms of the protocol that they follow for their circuses because, you know, they're, they're well aware of it. They weren't able to do that the last, recall it wasn't enough time last year.
Well, and we should give them some credit. They came in way earlier this year than they did last year. So they're following our procedures, which at least is...
I'm still torn on this one.
Well, but the nice thing is if we don't address it at all, we're just stuck. So whatever we come up with will be better than the system we have now.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll move back up to item number eight, which is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 16-103.
Ordinance number 16-103, an ordinance making appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health and welfare of the city and further to provide lawful appropriations available for expenditure by January 1st, 2017 and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a public hearing, so anyone that wants to make comments on appropriations ordinance for next year, I'd like you to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll postpone the public hearing. Take this to three readings.
Yeah, next Thursday.
Elaine, would you take the next, 19, 20, 21, ordinance 16-111 and 11113?
Just 19?
Oh, you just want to do 19? Okay.
Ordinance number 16-111, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Bo-Town Delaware LTD, Old Colony Estates Phase 2, consisting of 55 single-family lots on approximately 14.92 acres, Zoned R4 with tax limitations, medium-density residential district and located on Wallace Drive, Vernon Avenue and Pilgrim Circle.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I don't know where my applicants are this evening for this case and the next cases, but I'm going to go ahead and present them anyway very, very quickly. This is Old Colony Estates Phase 2, final subdivision plat. This has been in process, Old Colony, for the better part, more than a decade at this point. Phase 1 is just about built out, but in orange on the screen, and I think most notably at the end of Vernon Avenue is Phase 2. It is Zoned R4 with tax limitations. Aerial photograph should we need it, but it shows you the four sub streets that would be connected with this section. Again, most notably, and I think long awaited Vernon connecting through. And then because I know there's two pieces to your, to the picture in your packet, we tried to put together one composite picture for you. It's not that great, but I think it does the job to show you the, the whole subdivision. It is 55 single-family lots on about 15 acres and would finish the Old Colony Estates subdivision. Ryan Holmes would be the builder of the lots at this point in time. Your planning commission recommends unanimous approval, as do we. Straightforward final subdivision plat from our perspective.
Comments or questions? Will Acton Snyder take it to another reading?
Do you have any complaints in your area?
We usually take these at two, don't we?
First reading. Yes, first reading.
You? Two. Okay, now we're down to 20 and 21, 16-112 and 1113.
Ordinance number 16-112, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for TNR properties for Willowbrook West, consisting of 96 single-family attached units on approximately 15.18 acres, Zoned R6 PU-D, multifamily residential district with a planned unit overlay district located on the west side of South Hulk Road, just north of Arthur Place. An ordinance number 16-113, an ordinance approving a preliminary subdivision plat for TNR properties for Willowbrook West, consisting of 96 single-family attached units on approximately 15.18 acres, Zoned R6 PU-D, multifamily residential district with a planned unit overlay district located on the west side of South Hulk Road, just north of Arthur Place.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffel.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, again, I'll present this to you this evening. It is a preliminary development plan and a preliminary subdivision plat for this area approximately at the end of Rock Mill Street along Hulk Road, just to the north of the existing Arthur Place Senior Housing Apartments and just south of the planned and zoned retail, Willowbrook Retail uses to the north. It is about 15 acres. The proposal was for 96 units. The reason why the zoning map looks a little bit messy is because it is. And we had allowed a little bit of a floating zone, if you will, in here for the lion to move depending on, you know, how development would come down in the future. The future for this piece is right now. And so this is in accordance with the original PU-D text, which was then amended a couple of times, beginning in 2007 and 2008. And the proposal in front of you is in accordance with those amendments as well as the original text. In fact, the text would allow this as multifamily area one and up to 106 units. That could be in an apartment configuration, could be in a multi-story configuration. What's being proposed here is a single-story ranch-style duplex configuration, but a condominium development. Really what I've described to you before is a land condominium development because these would be on their own individual lots of record as well. Looking at the site plan quickly, we would have, like Arthur Place, sidewalks available either in front of or immediately across the street from every unit with the conditions that we've included in your ordinance. There's also central park space and there are some additional off-street parking spaces for visitors. A couple of these, one of our conditions is to move because right now they're, they're just denoted in a roadway. And so one of our conditions is to remove those and add a couple of more to the north here, up the upper right of the screen, where you see some parking spaces there. Of note, each unit will have a two-car garage and space for two cars in each driveway. So there's adequate off or onsite, on lot parking for visitors. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval, as do we, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments? We'll take this to two readings as well. Thank you. Item 22, sitting here. Hopefully we can get through the budget process tonight. Our final meeting, next Thursday night is the end of the year meeting. So, that's about that. Council comments? Mr. Jones?
I have none, sir.
I have none.
Not a thing?
Nor do I.
We can go back to the budget. Yeah, I think we just go back to the third reading, ordinance number eight. Just continuation of the budget. We've done the reading, right.
We're just going to finish the discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
So what's left on your list?
I had just a couple of, some of these are just housekeeping in nature and I might as well go over them now. On page 79 of the budget, there is a, is the Recreation Levy Fund. And I think I included a couple of weeks ago in one of my bi-weekly reports, an update on those funds and a recommendation that the council subcommittee, council rec levy subcommittee convened in early January to review the recommendations for closing out that program in 2017. Ted Miller had included some suggestions, which I think we need to review. But what's in the budget right now is pretty much a carryover from what was in the 2016 budget. And there are a couple of projects in there that were originally recommended by the Citizens Recreation Levy Committee that upon further review by, by staff, we've got some thoughts about whether you want to reprogram, reprogram those funds. So that's, that's just making you aware that there'll be a meeting. I think what we'll try to do is have the meeting prior to a city council meeting, and that's what we had done in the past. And it's the four board council members who are on that committee. And so Kyle, this would probably be your first, your first meeting and perhaps your last of that committee, but we really want to try to wrap this, wrap this up in, in In connection with the Recreation Levy, while I'm on that subject, Dean had done some preliminary analysis as he does annually in looking at our debt, what our debt obligations are, what our current income tax collections are, and then kind of tried to project what point the debt would be paid for. It's about, like in, about 2000, between probably 2024 and 2026, depending on the rate of collection. Obviously, we are, Dean is using a 3% number. Obviously, in the last few years, it's been, it's a little bit higher than that, but we're looking at averages over a period of time. So probably the two, that, that time period is what we're talking about. So that's when that, when that debt would, would be retired and we would, that 1.5 would, 0.15 would roll off, 0.15 in the income tax. So that's item number one. Item two, we had talked earlier in the year about an airport business plan. I met with the Airport Commission at their meeting earlier this year, late fall, regarding that. And it's, I think it's time to take a look at that, that operation. I think it, we do a really, really fine job at running a general aviation airport, but with the recent investment that we have made as a community and that the federal government has made, I think it's time to see if we can increase the utilization of that, that facility. That is an important part of our, the city and the region. And I think a business plan could help us provide some direction from the standpoint of just how we look at it as a business. Everything from how we handle the fixed-based operator agreements that we have out there, the rental rates that we charge, how we handle the gas operation, the fuel operation. It's a big, it's a, it's a big operation. And if you had a chance to look at the Sterling, Colorado business plan that I sent out on Saturday, it was, it was almost in mirrors entirely, but they had just finished a runway extension and the community, the city and the county were looking at this and saying, "What do we need to do? We need to step up our efforts." And there's also a very, very good, there's some very good research that the Airport Advisory Commission put together that provides a real good template for a business plan. I have included an appropriation of $20,000 in the budget. I think it's probably going to be somewhat more than that. I'm not sure, probably between 35 and 40, but I'm not sure. So we could either, if council's agreeable to doing this, first of all, if you are, we could do the RFP, find out what those, what those fees are and then come back to you at some time, and probably February or March, and make an adjustment to the budget or we could try to do that now. I don't know what, but I really would, you know, like to get some feedback. I know when George, you were on the Airport Commission, you had some, you had some comments about this and it was favorably received by the, by the Airport Commission.
Is there any, is there, what's the possibilities of us regionalizing this airport? Getting the city out from underneath as the sole owner of that? Regionalizing it from a, getting county buy-in to this? We do invest a lot of money regardless of who owns it. It does provide benefits for the entire region, the entire Delaware County and beyond. And, you know, to me, it seems that maybe some type of partnership with the county would be very beneficial and help relieve us of some of this. I mean, it, it is a substantial investment that we continue to put into that airport. Where do we stand on it?
I think that would be, that could be one of the questions that you could, you could ask to be looked at. We actually had approached the county back in the early 2000s about this. We had some preliminary discussions with them right after I arrived and I think they actually had those prior to that.
They wanted to buy it of one...
Yeah. So it's, it's definitely something, it is a regional asset. I think it's something that most, in most Ohio, most Ohio airports are the counties. Ours, just for a number of different reasons, wasn't, it was a private area field to begin with, so. But I think it's a, it's worth exploring that. And I think any consultant who you would hire to look at a business plan would ask you that same question. Have you considered, have you considered the county? Have you considered any other, other operational arrangements?
I know at that time, and I don't know whether the FAA still has that all, that the county wanted to purchase it.
I know at that time, and I don't know whether the FAA still has that hall, that the county wanted to purchase it. It was my understanding that, and Dean, you might know, we have to pay back to the federal government anything that we invested in there that they gave us through matching funds.
I don't.
That was a question that came up at that.
Yeah, I don't necessarily remember it being the county. I know there was an entity that was interested in buying it, more of a private entity. And in that case, um, you know, there's questions whether we even could sell it. But, uh, if we were, we would clearly be responsible for any of the FAA money that, that put out there.
And we invested quite a bit, initially it was ten percent, now it's five, five percent.
So that's, uh, that's on page sixty-seven of the budget. There's just a, they're under professional services. We were showing, uh, we're showing that amount that might be sufficient, but, um, just wondering if you're aware of it. So, you know, what your preference would be, just to, to go through the RFP process and see what we're looking at? Okay, okay, so you can do that. So that's, uh, another item. Another item is the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Organization that was recently, was recently formed. Their dues are five hundred dollars a month, while I'll make, uh, make a change to reflect that that wasn't picked up in the budget. The, uh, five hundred dollars a year. No, I said, it's already expensive. This is, uh, yeah, low barrier to entry for dues. Impact fee updates, and this is something that, if you take a look at the impact fee, uh, budgets in each of those budgets, and there's an allocation for, uh, an annual update, which is something we have not done, uh, in last several years. And something we discussed as part of last year's budget. I was going to bring a supplemental appropriation forward to you in the fall. And at that point, I said, let's just wait, we'll put it in the budget and get the work underway. So in the impact fee budgets, there's a, uh, appropriation for that. And that will allow us to update the fees and make a report back to City Council, probably, uh, within, by the end of the first quarter of, uh, two thousand and seventeen.
Should that go to the Finance Committee or not?
It could, I mean, it's, it could, yeah. That would, that would work. The, um, the comp plan we've talked about, we need to come back to that. We discussed parking. Morpsy's due statement has our old population, so we have to increase that by twenty-six hundred dollars. So I'll just make a notation of that when the, when the budget is presented to you. We talked about the Community Promotion Fund. Golf course, we, there was considerable discussion at your Saturday work session about the golf course. We subsequently followed up with some information. Dean provided you a, kind of a cash flow, uh, that's over the last several years. In addition to that, Ted had provided just some analysis that he did on, um, on the golf course and kind of, um, looking at scenarios that if you continue running it as a golf course, or if it was just an open, it was an open park land. So I didn't know if you wanted to, uh, uh, have any further discussion on that. But that's, uh, uh, those are the items that I had.
Any further discussion on the golf course?
Where are we at on that, uh, the tower?
The tower, we have a meeting scheduled for next week at Horizon. Uh, we hired the, uh, firm that's done the appraisal. I believe they've given us a preliminary assessment, which we're kind of reviewing right now.
Now, roughly, how much revenue a month?
You know, I'm not sure, Chris, what, what the amount would be. Well, yeah, I don't, I, I hate to just throw a number up there.
Was that earmarked for, to go back to the golf course?
It could be, yes. I mean, one of my recommendations would be that, to the extent that you're able to enter into negotiations and you reach an agreement on a location, and they reach an agreement on a monthly fee, I would recommend to go back into the golf course. That's a dedicated revenue source, uh, that could help the golf course. I mean, that, that's the, you know, they're hosting the site. There is a, um, a meeting, as they say, next week to take a look at an alternative location on the golf course. And that's, I think, with Dean and Ted are involved in it.
And then this, this Wednesday is the Golf Course Subcommittee meeting, I think.
The working group, yeah.
And will, will we have results? Station by next, by our next meeting? Or could we?
Yes, you could have the minutes, we give the minutes out to you. Uh, one of the things we wanted to move forward with, as one of the entries to the group, was, um, that we would look, work towards a strategic plan for sustainability for the golf course by March first, based on our comments at the last council meeting. But yeah, the minutes can definitely be forwarded to council, uh, this week, actually.
Okay, yeah, if we could maybe get Ted on the agenda, Ted, just, uh, recap that meeting as well.
And you saw where our pricing is, we're, we, I think that, that should be on the table, um, in terms of taking a look at that. I don't, um, you know, obviously, there's some, there's a point at which you raise the price, you're going to change your, your demand, but I think we're probably, probably have a little bit of margin there, so.
Anything else on golf courses? Tom's at one there?
Yeah, really, the, the, the questions really are, do you want to, you know, make any changes beyond what? What's been recommended? And, um, you know, the comp plan is, I, I'd like to find a way to be able to recommend to you to, to get that done. I saw it out, I know if you saw it today, but Dave forwarded me some information about it. Really, really, well, I don't know what the, what that cost, but they're curious. Portsmouth's a larger community than Delaware's, down in the Hampton Roads area, I believe. So.
I think it's answered, yeah, what was, what was the community?
Uh, hey, uh, Portsmouth, was it Portsmouth or Virginia?
Just an example.
Portsmouth, Ohio?
Just an example of the different social media platforms and outreach platforms that, just one that came across my desk, I'm aware of, and I thought was a good example of what I've been trying to describe to you.
I'll take it, get it.
Anything else for discussion?
So you want to come back in the beginning of the year regarding the comp plan? Regarding the C I T, and at that point, discuss this comp plan?
We're looking at the comp plan, we're talking about money for road maintenance, and now we're talking about matching money for, for projects. Everyone's understanding we're going to come back in the first week?
Okay, so what we'll do is, um, is part of the packet that will go out probably later this week. I don't know if we'll have all of it complete, but we'll get you, it's just a summary of any of the changes that we're, that we're recommending and, and what that does to the bottom line, shouldn't affect it that much. And, um, uh, and then be ready for final consideration next, uh, Thursday night.
Is that meeting going to start at seven?
It's up to you, if you want to start it earlier, that's, I think we, at, no, it's a final council meeting, seven o'clock. It's the final, yeah, that's your final meeting. And the only items on the agenda are, right now, just the, uh, the budget and, uh, the, uh, the pay plans, so.
So there's no meeting on the nineteenth, it's the twenty-second, and it's the last meeting of the, of the month, right, of the year?
Of the year, yeah. That will be the final supplemental appropriation, the budget and the pay plans. And then your first meeting in January, the ninth, will be the continuation of what you had tonight, the planning cases tonight, and any, and the circus movements and anything else.
Okay, so next we move into the beginning of session?
Yeah.
Someone want to move to going into the beginning of session, or do you want to take a break first?
Do you want to take a break?
Quick thing. I think we can stay, we'll stay here.